Uh today is Monday, November third, twenty twenty five. I'd like to open the town's town select board meeting this five fifty nine P M. And we'll start with the questions. Questions?
To the to the United States.
Good night.
To the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God,
what?
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, uh citizens comment, anybody here with my keepy citizen's comment? Oh, I thought here, you know, I had my question. Whatever these ones. They call me here. One moment please, uh president on the board. Daniel, Laura Lambert. Chris Caruso.
John Harrington.
Anybody else wanna announce who's here?
Peter DeSantis.
Mike Frazzinala.
Chad Pelis here.
Beth Tower.
Alright, now we'll take your public comments, my sorry about that.
I was talking with Crystal Robbins, and she said the uh the last crafts there went pretty well, but they had slightly less uh shoppers because of competition with Halloween and the football game that day. But they had different somewhat different vendors that day and different shoppers. But they still have waiting that they can't fit into that property. So one of the things that they're gonna be looking for next year when they restart the craft areas and the farmers market is when some some more farmers just sell produce and slightly bigger venues. Darkly like next O- Obershaws. Be a a bigger location, but that's up in the air because of McDonald's taking. We have no idea when they're actually gonna to Obershaws. Um but we're not doing it. And somewhere beginning is we're giving up on the Christmas light contest. And uh trying to do things in advance, like backyard signs on order. And take a new tactic backyard sign that are very generic. Just said something like, you know, Christmas light contest this month is at the town weather drifts. And we're gonna put those all up and down, loop three. Try to get as much as as much uh concentrated advertising as possible. And we're also trying to get the student council of the school to participate, party uh serving hot chocolate and cookies for refreshments. So the day of the uh awards, we're gonna have the Santa parade. And Ryan Ross was working on the uh a map for the loop. We're gonna have Santa with the police and fire escort as we did last year. Just hoping.
Hopefully it's warmer. Yes, we have a stepson, he was cold.
For Santa's blossoms, it's a lot of lot of lot of different.
Yes, for sure, or even like plastic plexiglass around the top of the tower that so they don't have the window on.
So that's that we are biggest and last best of the year. And the uh for the Halloween contest, we tend lower participation than last year, so I'm not sure what's what's going on to the town. There are a lot of people decorated, but we only had like eight homes signed up. And it was pretty clear cut who had the the best display. Just gave it out there once. This time we did something different. Did a wave of first, second, and third into hierarchy. Just came up with three different categories. Over categories.
Scariest, most original investment show, and chat these upstairs.
Yeah. Do you want to say this? Alright. I'm here with three different categories similar to that for Christmas contest. And uh so the flowers are all the yard the yard sign on our flyers, they're gonna turn the next thing is to do some some webpages to uh that look like what we did for the Halloween contest. We'll have instruction in our eyes, sign up and I will have a page that's gonna be a slideshow of everybody's photos. So it should end here.
Thank you. How does mine go fresh now? Any other?
You wanna tell us about the friends?
Oh, well, I kinda did last week, and I know people have seen that on Facebook, but it's a nonprofit group that form is forming to support the library programming, so it's another way for the library, not specifically the library, but that friends group to go after grant monies, fundraising efforts, so that they can hopefully expand the programming at the library without increasing any taxes, without increasing the library's tax funded budget. So we got a good crew of people and we're just getting started. It takes a while to get up and running because to get that other one C three designation up. They're they formed, they appointed their officers, and they're moving in their own direction.
Good. Good. Any other public comments? Okay, uh we'll move into our regular agenda. We have Chad, I'll see her here from the Hiney department.
Yeah. Great, we have a I got a couple things for you, um the first one being the loader. Um loader is if you look at the C I P, we actually put it on for twenty twenty six. Um it seems like every every Monday or every other Monday, it happened again, um happened again today, we come in and load it dead in the yard. It dies on it dies on Allison on weekends. Um I don't know what goes on with it. We try and we get it running again, and it seems run for a while and um it's been something that's happened periodically through the last year, but it seems to be happening more and more and more. Um so with the money in the budget that we have for our capital outlay um that has not been spent, my goal is to move that forward um and start it with a payment this year and then moving forward for the next three years after this. Um that could be kinda kinda the goal. Um so talking to John, what else? We uh we priced out loaders that are similar in size, uh all basically twenty to thirty two thousand pounds, they're about. Um but they're they're very comparable to what we have. Um and the I believe you guys got the the stretch sheet, did they get actually they didn't get the quotes, but they got the stretch sheet, we kind of goes over. The quote and the quotes, so um Borgard at the last minute today um sent the sent the second quote saying we really, really want our business, we'd like to sharpen our pencil a little bit. Um so that one one ninety eight eight was actually reduced to one eighty nine. Um that's after trade.
Chad, how old is the current?
Current loader was purchased um used by us in two thousand thirteen versus two thousand twelve. Yeah, and the biggest problem with the current loader is is we bought it from Equipment East, um and at that time, everybody thought it was gonna be the new Aquatonic loader. Everybody kinda thought the Lugen was gonna catch on, and the price point was good. It was very much based that based on an old cat pillow design. Um so it looked a lot like the old cats. We were very comfortable with it because we're very used to it. You know, uh used to the look and everything. The problem with it is is getting parts. Um three weeks ago, a month ago, we we blew a hose. Um it took Ryan four hours to find one. He found one in Texas on the shelf. If the if he hadn't found that one in Texas, which is probably it very much likely the only one in the States. It was three months from China. They refuse to, I don't know why, but Lugen refuses, absolutely refuses to send anything air. Everything's got one of those coming on this, yeah. Yeah, so two years ago, with that same machine, we had a uh the radiator go. And it gone, we had issues with it, it was turned repaired and repaired and repaired, and finally couldn't be repaired anymore. Um it was six, they said six months, we had a radiator. We actually found a guy in Massachusetts that built them for scratch. We gave him the old lady radiator, it took him two weeks, we put one together. Um brake lines, we went through brake lines last year. Um and uh we had to have courtesy uh courtesy outlets actually made the brake lines because they've never seen one.
So it's.
They never saw the fittings, they literally had the where they need the where they need the brake calipers, they had to, they had to machine and then then make the lines. So.
So it's cheaper to get a sounds like it's a newer one than it is three fifty.
Well, yeah, and and we were hoping that, you know, I mean, when we bought it, we just assumed that there would be parts would be readily available. There were it's kinda like I said, it was that old cat design, nothing is compatible for that little cat.
Yeah, it's so. It's too unpredictable what you could get.
Yeah.
That's right.
Right, right, and it being the older it gets, there's no more, the Equipment East doesn't deal with Lugen anymore, that's super helpful, they're helping us trying to get the stuff. Um you know, and I mean, when they heard we were having problems with the hose, they actually the the owner of Equipment East has been great to us. He actually brought a loader for and just dropped it in the yard and said use it, use it, we know we do. You know? And it, you know, there so that kinda that it's it it speaks volumes for the company, but it's it's nice to know that at least they got us they got back because they know they kinda they they thought they thought the same thing we did, it was gonna be the Aquatonic machine.
Yeah.
Um.
And where are they located?
Equipment East.
Yeah.
Is in Bo.
Oh.
So um so the the four quotes we got, Equipment East is in Bo, Borogard is in Concord. Um they're they they're the case dealer, and they uh I mean, we bought our back all from them, we've done this to them back. Um the John United is now the John Garrett dealer, they're in Concord as well. And um and then you have Anderson Equipment, um and Anderson's in Manchester. So the the four the four guys are they're all local companies, um. So that being said, looking at the three at the four machines, um Equipment East ob- obviously opinion was the best deal. Um they're a little less on the trade in. But uh overall numbers are they're far cheaper, um. When it comes to the warranty, four guys warranty is included, um the John D uh four guys is is not a three year, that that was a typo, that should be a seven year warranty. Um Equipment East is a five year warranty. It comes standard with a three, but we've always stretched our stuff out in the past to five. Um and the John Garrett comes with a four year. They all have hours that are that are age on those warranties, but we never hit the hour mark. Um we just don't run them enough. If they were in the sand pit or if they were running every day, it would be very uncomfortable to hear them powers, but um just like mileage on the trucks, we we hit three years before we hit thirty six thousand miles. I mean, our two thousand fifteen, I think that's twenty four thousand miles. So it's it's on the low sync.
So Chad, based on dealing with these companies, which what what's your preference? Because you've gotta consider a lot more than just the price.
Sure, sure.
Service and availability and some some.
Well, and that's I think.
That's important, right?
So the I mean, everybody's heard of Case, everybody's heard of the John Garrett. Um and Anderson sells the Komatsu, which is a very popular brand. The um the Equipment East is a newer brand, it's a Devlin. Um so that means that they have if Dusan to Dusan bought out Devlin and and brought it to the States. So Dusan is a large a larger equipment company. They own Vodka. They own a bunch of other other equipment companies like that. Um and you know, I was as soon as he he said Dusan, I mean, or or Devlin, it's it's kinda new and I was like, so whatever. You know, are we pulling down the Lugen trail again? And he said, you know, then I did a little bit more research of it, and he was uh he was able to give me some um some other other towns and stuff that have purchased them. So Hookshead has them, Manchester has a couple of them, Concord has one. Um so even around they they've uh they all have them and they're all happy with them. Um they're just a little bit newer to the to the U S market, but Dusan is a is is a huge company. So I I think that's where where I'm more comfortable than Lugen was just them, you know, more or less. So. They don't, um so talking to them, they have um they have two ware, they they have two um two warehouses in the U S, one on the East Coast, one on the West Coast. They're putting their they're talking about opening another one mid mid country. Um and there's would be a list of the inventory maps. So I think there's it it's becoming, they're spreading a bit as they spread. Uh so that's the, I mean, that's the the hit or miss of it, I can't.
From the numbers though, that the Borogard is really financially the best deal.
Well, John Deere is John Deere is one s one seventy ninety nine. Borgard one eighty nine.
Oh, John Deere is one seventy nine?
Yeah.
It says two oh four here.
It says two oh four, but that was free, that was um two oh four is without the uh without the trade.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, the trade is.
Yeah, and Lugen, the Lugen all said and done with the warranty is one fifty six, seven fifty nine.
Right. But then you pay five thousand five hundred for the warranty?
No, it's in that one fifty six.
It's in that one.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm gonna be sure that that's fine, but.
Yes.
That's all we got, which is better deal, okay.
So so there, I mean, there, you know, it it's it is, you know, thirty thousand dollars per tape, twenty five thousand dollars cheaper. Um that being said, the if you were to go to if we were to decide to go with a different machine other than that one, um it would there would be a cost involving um there there would be a the cost would involve a lot of gear on our on our own. So we wouldn't do a five year purchase, we'd have to go to a superior lease market. Um which would kinda mess with the C I P. You know, when it when it comes to that.
Yeah, because you were looking at twenty six for this piece of equipment.
Right.
Is there something in twenty five that you've haven't had to address yet, or like might be a spot out on your C I P schedule?
Something.
Other, you know, like y- you know, what did you have planned for this year that maybe you didn't have to?
Well, I think I think the bigger the biggest thing that happened was is the um when we went for in the previous piece of equipment that was purchased was the was the excavator. Uh and the excavator ended early because that was supposed to be the back. The excavator was actually fifty million cheaper than the backhoe. So when we move, you know, everything kinda gets shuffled backwards a little bit. So we were able to do it, the excavator in three as opposed to four years. Then uh with a little bit money out of capital reserve, that's supposed to. So it it kinda it kinda sped everything up a little bit. And we held our we kinda held talking to John a little bit on this just to see where the budget was.
When you go to unload the loader, you don't know.
Yeah.
Would would can you anticipate anything for that? Would both will?
Uh for trade in, so.
For trade in, okay, trade in, sorry, you're right, nevermind.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so the only one that wasn't interested in it was Anderson or didn't wanna give us the number on was Anderson. Yeah, so we'll we'll get it chopped, it's on there.
Um which line are you looking at, case of funds?
The capital, they won't, but I don't give a fuck, man.
So right now, there's thirty four thousand four hundred and seventy one dollars available. Chad, reaching out to Tax Exempt Leasing Corporation, who we use by Free Brooklyn, for a five year payment, comes in at thirty four thousand four thirty four and thirty eight cents, so
Wait, I'm.
There's a non.
That's funny.
So that's how it play into the decision for that loader, right?
And they're all men involved too, with five. Well, yeah, it would be considered action, right?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so and most of women work with it, work with them, uh talking to Tax Exempt, they work with uh they work with United Borgard and these Equipment East in the past. And like I said, the the thing that Chad didn't scare me about like um Equipment East is that they've just been so good to deal with. You know, I mean, we've had problems and they brought over a loader. They knew were, you know, they knew we were having problems. They were gonna leave it for a week to make sure we were up and running. Um we got that hose in and they the owner was just like, leave it there.
Yeah, they act like they're hoping this is who supports other workers.
They and they definitely are, um yeah, because they can, I mean, you know, John Deere has changed a whole lot. We don't even know this know the the salesman's name anymore, you know, because they just they 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 gone, they 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 were bought out and when they were bought out one corporate, it was it's been it's been tough there. A little bit, I mean, the the sales guy is awesome, but it still is just been it's different. Um it's been different.
Yeah, we had a bad experience, and I would I would not recommend Chad here.
Yeah, and 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 they may create equipment, it's just a matter of, yeah.
Was the, well, yeah.
Right. You know, so it and you build a relationship. I mean, these guys can be a pain because they show up every other month, and they find out what you're looking to buy, what's going on next year. And and they keep their, but like I said, the 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 turnover with with United is gone, it's been pretty quiet.
Yeah.
Um so and the guy that sold us that Lugen in twenty thirteen is still the same guy that stopped by and with Equipment East, so I think that's a block for the company too, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I I I'll give you support, whatever you whatever needs to be, that's because you deal with them.
And I mean, we've run it, you know, we've had it for two weeks. I spent a couple hours in it this afternoon. It's a comfortable machine and it it's far nicer than the uh the Lugen was or is. Um you know, and and it seems to run, it seems to have plenty of power, it seems to do the job, so I I mean I don't know that it's twenty five thousand dollars is worth of money. And I mean, at this point, you know, and I talked to a couple of local guys, um and uh and they they all actually said that they would not, they wouldn't um hesitate by it, the Devlin. So so we've gone through.
It is hard, but it's just gonna be especially with parts like that, that's going on worldwide, which you can't predict.
No, I don't know.
Right.
But you know, at least we have a five year warranty if it looks like it's going the wrong way, then we get out early maybe and we we shop, although we ride it out fifteen years and and we're in the same boat in fifteen years from now, because that's what that piece of equipment should last. You know?
Yeah. And I imagine you guys use this loader like not weekly daily, right?
Yeah, so everything that happens in the transfer station happens with the loader, the compost, you know, all of that stuff happens with the loader. Um we set most of our structures, our bigger structures, catch bases and stuff with the loader. Um we load all our trucks with salt and sand with the loader. Um so without this loader, we have the backhoe as backup, but the backhoe is a part in the shop right now too. Because we had a radiator and a radiator going. We're waiting for that coming. So they sent us a wrong one last week. So hopefully this week we get that ready for our right one, yeah. So um but the backhoe is in the old set, I think. So that's an old piece of equipment too.
Yeah.
You know, and that'll that'll be coming up on the C I P as well. You know, so it it's time the the time to change.
Well, we have to stay in rotation, otherwise you get behind the eight balls and.
Right. I mean, we would be in, I mean, if we if that loader goes down in the middle winters for granted, it's gonna be three or four granted month. So we can.
And then get it back.
Right, right, we can throw away half that line real fast in the winter and
Yeah.
and then, like you said, you go back.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, you don't have a contract, and we're just making a motion to allow the loader agent to uh move forward with the purchase of.
Right, and then he would contact uh Tax Exempt Leasing, who would give us, yeah, documentation to sign.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second guess.
And on favors.
Daphne, Hannah, Diana, Lauren.
Trishan.
That's one. Um number two is uh Bill. Does we have a resignation from William the Surf?
Oh.
Not the best sign for this, but it's happening. So Bill is gone to before, so I'll give you a little bit of history. He was he worked for Pemra for years. Um went to the Valleys, worked for the Valleys in twenty one. Um when they sold.
Oh.
And he was employed for for the Valleys. When they sold, he uh he um did not like the corporate world of the new company.
Yeah.
So that being said, he he came to us thinking that getting back into this, but decided that he really missed oil. And um was offered a job several dollars more an hour, driving one or two year running. Um and I don't think for days. And I don't think for taking it, yeah, I think it's still, it's good for him and, and he likes. I drove, I helped my cousin when he started his company and, and so he would talk about oil trucks with me all the time and. You know, it was kind of, I think it's kind of his love, so. That being said, um, we're looking to hopefully get the okay to go off me and.
Post the job.
Post the job.
Say so.
That doesn't have me as a long.
No worries.
Any questions, John, about firing these, or? Make a motion for the loader agent to hire for the. What's the position called again?
Truck driver labor, yes.
Truck driver labor position, if anybody can.
I'll second. Um, favor Kathleen, Diana, Laura, and Trish.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, the only other is kind of an FYI. For years and years and years, I think the town and everybody else has used the state sign shop for signs. Um, I would suggest that if anybody else is buying signs for anything else, that you shop them. So the state, we had to, they, when they did, we did the uh asphalt on, on Main Street. They hit the brick and street sign. It came down, it was put on, they needed against the telephone pole, never called me, well, I got a phone call from a resident saying that your sign is against the pole. So I went down and grabbed it, and somebody else thought it probably looked good on their wall or something, so it went. It, it was, it wasn't there when I got there, um, called the sign shop, and it was, um, they, they gave you a. Price that I was not, not really happy with, um. They gave you a price of like, it was only eighty, it was like eighty two dollars or eighty four dollars or something like that. Just a street sign that said Quentin. Um, yeah, so when Ronnie told you, they sent the, sent the backhoe, I mean, I suppose eighty, eighty two dollars and change. Um, I was like, let's shop it, and uh.
Oh, one?
Just one, yeah. So, we found a couple of the other signing companies that we use on occasion. And they were, I think the, the cheapest one was like thirty eight dollars, and the next one was like forty. Those are the same stuff.
Wow.
So I don't know what they're, part of the budget they're trying to uh. The fiddle in, but.
Call it.
They're trying to do in uh. At, at sign, but whenever it's looking for a sign, let me know and I, I can steer you in the right direction because. State is not in the right direction. Um, so.
Well, not directly related to that, is that a state will be increasing the um, state portion of the registration fees. On average, ten dollars for registration next year. And titles by an average of like. Eight dollars, something like that. Uh yeah, so next year.
They put that up, so when I was.
Yeah, yeah, they, you know, they, they made me up for the money with the original inspection, was it, but it's some.
Well, they're gonna put it in the street sign. Like, thanks Chad, I hope you come done.
Thanks.
You got it, thank you.
All righty, um, when, you know, twenty twenty five, we're gonna tax rate of setting. I'm gonna be cash, um. We're just gonna unpack it with a. Breakdown. If anybody has any questions on that, we are gonna make a motion to accept it.
I don't know why we won't accept it.
Any other order, any question?
I make a motion? Uh, I make a motion to accept the uh new tax rate of twenty four eighty eight, I guess. About twenty four eighty eight.
For twenty twenty five.
For twenty twenty five, thank you.
I'll check that. Arnold Baker.
Kathleen, Diana, Laura.
Trish. Is it good? You can teach in. Hi, uh, future town hall, please.
This week I don't have an answer, but um, we're still waiting. I've talked to the new TAC, he should have that to me in a day or two, so, yeah, he's finishing that up.
Okay.
Peter's working on interior door quotes. And hopefully by next meeting, I'll have some information to share.
Uh town administrator is important.
This is um, new town hall related, I have two quotes. From R.B. Lewis, who is our new fire inspection security system vendor. Uh, the first quote is for the security upgrade to AES, and that is uh come in at eighteen thousand nine hundred and three dollars. That is to upgrade all of the security system, motion detectors, keypad systems in the building, you get it where it needs to be. And that would be coming out of the capital reserve fund for the new municipal building.
It's, you getting the other quotes for that? For that particular work?
Well, they're our vendor of choice, they already work on all our other buildings, it does not make sense to have another vendor work on.
Yeah, we discussed, yes, yeah, I know, we already talked about it, and said, yes, just them, if I remember. Yes.
Yeah. Um, and if you want, I can give you the second quote, that is for upgrading the fire alarm system. That quote comes in at thirty thousand four hundred and ninety five dollars. Again, remember the age of the building and the new codes that um need to be upgraded. Both of those projects would be coming out of the capital reserve fund. And the last balance I have available is four hundred and seventy one thousand one hundred and thirty five dollars.
So these expenditures keep us on track, that's above what we were expecting, so we were protecting for our expenses.
Yes. And both of these have been brought before the committee, and they both have approved them to move them to the board.
You need a.
So we need a motion for eighteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars to upgrade the AES security system. And a motion for thirty thousand four hundred and ninety five dollars to upgrade the fire alarm system at AES.
A move?
I'll second that. Alina, Diana, Laura.
Did I make that easy enough?
Yes, that was unfortunate.
You second, I'm sorry, Trish, you made the motion.
Always.
Thank you. Um, being as it is budget season, uh I'll make a plug, our first budget meeting was the budget committee, it's this Saturday. At Collins Town Community School, nine o'clock. Um. Two questions for the board, as the board thought about including a step increase in the budget for twenty twenty six. And or a COLA. I also put in some documentation in your packet, I had Scott Smith do some work calculating. COLAs at two percent, two point five percent, and three percent. I attached documentation behind that. Most towns use the Northeast Consumer Price Index based in the COLA. Increase in the year. The most current act of five was August twenty twenty five. At that time, it was up three point three percent over last year. And then the second question I have, if are considering a COLA, would you consider including it in the budget? As part of every salary line, or as a standalone more in our?
Wouldn't we do it for twenty twenty five, did we?
It was included in the budget.
Yeah.
So any amount that you approve, I would have Scott go in and increase every salary line by that percentage.
I personally am in favor of having it a separate more in our hall, I think that, you know, we, we struggle with. In approving increases this year, you know, if we get hit with another default budget, that those types of tasks. Are gonna become more numerous for us, um, A, B, um, this really tells the public, hey, you know. We need to increase our, our, our employees' salaries, this is the cost of living increase. Their salaries need to be kept up with that, that type of thing, that's my personal.
I think it works fair to say how many employees. It represents too, cause when you see a number like that, um, I personally think where they did not get, many of them did not get raised. Some of the departments came in and did them mid-year, and some were retroactive, some departments still received nothing, um. I would personally be in favor, like I would vote for the three percent. And I do think separating it out allows the voters that they still want to go default, they could go default. But still allow. These raises, yeah.
Right, and if they're gonna say no, you know, whether it's in default or not, they're gonna say no to that, that's a no to the default, I'm thinking, so.
I think it's high risk, but it probably won't pass, that's, yeah, that's, that has a.
And running that.
At least uh, I'm retired. Yes. Then I get that tie.
Yeah.
I, yes, kind of a double edged sword, I guess.
Yeah.
What do you think of science, explain it a little bit more to me, you can put it as a word.
That it.
For putting it, yeah, a warrant article would say, yeah. Yeah. And then I have to.
Then, then that, then that puts into play the no means no rule.
So we.
Which, which means if.
Okay, put it being more, uh correct.
If, if the public votes no on a warrant article, you can't spend the money on that subject of any. It's in the budget, the budget fails, you can still. Put the COLA in, you just grab money from the, from the budget.
Okay. No, but things we do have to think about is, you know. The thing we, the thing is, uh, we have some, we're gonna increase in our health outreach, right?
Three point four percent.
It's not huge for cost increase, but it is increased. Um, you know, increase it to just general expenses we can deposit.
Like John said, he was stubborn, I'm coming, I'm repelling, we're gonna be.
The healthcare line will still be over forty thousand less than the budgeted amount.
Right, this is, right. But, yeah, there's a lot of things we have to weigh in, with fear of this, fear of our people. Going to a second year, that's even deeper concept, I'm making.
Yeah, we need to make this decision tonight.
Yes.
Does it have to be made tonight, but we have two budget meetings, these can, these additions can remain during those meetings?
Yes. I personally would just like a little bit more time to wrap my head around it, just because. The process is a little bit moving, so I would like personally just to be able to look and be able to sort it and just think. If that's, I mean, that's just me.
Interesting, well.
It would have to be done before the final budget is voted.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
Okay.
I mean, I get what you guys are saying completely, and I get what you're saying, I do, yeah, I. I could deserve a raise. Yeah, and we, we can, we can. Yeah, I don't know, we, we give the raise anyway, and not lose valuable employees, especially ones that require. Like a lot of training, police officers, fire advisors, I mean, even Chad, they don't go to school, but he's got, you know, if he's training somebody, he loses, that's. His productivity that will lose.
All the C I L services, yeah.
Well.
I mean, C I Ls are. And I mean, if you look at what we do compared to what the surrounding towns do, I mean, nobody puts pipe in, nobody puts their own catch bases in.
You're right.
I mean, we did those numbers for the budget committee in twenty three. In twenty three and twenty four, and because we have the crew we have.
Yeah.
I use Pembroke's numbers because they get all that stuff out. And what we did for fifty three was over a half a million dollars. With Pembroke's numbers, and their numbers are better than what we get because they do more. You know, so I mean, we, we can save almost a half a million dollars in two years by, by, by paying the guys. Two dollars more an hour, or a dollar more an hour, I mean, it's, it's pennies compared.
I could pay to lose the last employee to get a. An increase.
So I would put this in your folder for next meeting, just hold on to that number, those numbers. I was asked to look for any stipulations that might be involved with the request from the crew school to do the playground grant.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, there are no, there were no stipulations with their grant. And I was also able to get a lot of documentation from the state with the LWRC, there were no stipulations with that item. The playground is outside of that area that the grant involves. The playground is actually part of the school property, the grant itself has to do with just that lower area field.
Did we have to make a motion on that, or is that just to see if.
No, just, I, I'll back to them, I'll get back to them saying, um, if they want to still go for the grant, they can.
Sounds good to me, yeah.
You also have information uh in there, I did a quick analysis of a full time or part time finance director. You can see the difference in the numbers. And when asked to do available fundings, uh it would either come from existing lines within the budget that we have now. Or we would add. Funding to that line. If we're going to maintain the finance work as well. Now, if you decide to go with a full time finance director, and you add the money in, and you don't get your operating budget. And you've hired someone, you'd have to find that money elsewhere in the budget.
Well, that brings me back to my original question about that revolving fund for the fire department, I really. I understood everything that Eric was saying about the intention being there to save for future equipment purchases. But at a balance of six hundred and twenty thousand right now, even if we need two million in ten years, we have far in excess in one year. Of what we would need, we would only need to be stating two hundred thousand to get to that in ten years, so to me, it seems like there's a lot of extra money sitting there. That we could, if we had the fire department start paying their expenses out of that fund, which is what was proposed to the taxpayers. When that revolving fund was presented to them, and, and they were asked to vote for it, they were told. We're asking you to approve this fund so that we can. Support the fire department operations out of it, you'll hardly see any effect on your tax rate by approving this fund, but we haven't been using it that way. So, I think if we started paying the fire department's expenses out of that revolving fund. We would be able to fund this position with the money that that frees up of the general fund, and to me. This position is imperative, it is one of the top two positions for administration in the town. The finance director doesn't just balance the books and prepare, prepare us for an audit. Every department head relies on them throughout the year to get advice about their budgets. Future spending, project planning, they consult with the budget committee, they attend all those meetings, when we used to have a full time finance director. She did so much to keep us on track, helped our department heads, helped every facet of our local government. We struggled along without one because we had to, we needed that high level expertise. To get our audits in order, but now that we've done that, I think it's a great mistake. To think we can forego that position, I think it is very important and pays back dividends in full. By having a qualified professional who understands municipal finance in a way none of us do. And can really guide that decision making and help keep us on track. I think that's, this is not a place we should be cutting corners, that's my personal view.
Can we get advice that Kathleen's talking about from the person that you have come in from MRI?
They, they, they fulfill that role now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're just not here every day.
So if we have questions or concerns, we can reach out and ask them.
By phone or email.
But they're not attending meetings, yeah, they're not, they're helping with the budget committee, they're not attending any of the meetings, they're not. Not on the same level, yeah. Yeah.
So it's very different, I mean.
Typically, when you have a full time finance director, they are presenting, they are presenting the budget. At a budget committee meeting, right now that I've taken on that role. Because we don't have a full time.
And the thing like, you know, we, we've had few conversations about this, um, regarding on revolving funds and. You know, what's coming in, what's going out, you know, that's just one example of the type of financial report. That, you know, somebody should be looking on a, on monthly, if not quarterly, quarterly basis, if not monthly basis. Right now. I don't believe that's a function that they're doing for us, and, and we wouldn't, we'd have to.
And I know when I go to the full time finance director, that finance director was consulted daily by the department head. I mean, she really helps a lot of people, she really streamlined. I think this town would have been in a much bigger. I think this town would have been in a much bigger pickle much sooner had we not had her, she really kept us afloat. When we lost her is when everything started going downhill, like it's an imperative position. And I know that the fire department is worried about the revolving fund, but again, I don't think making this move. Jeopardizes them or their ability to provide their services or to save for the future in any way, if we had them start putting their operating expenses through that revolving fund. From now until March, when we see what happens with the operating budget. They should still have far in excess of that fund of what they would need to be saving on a yearly basis. And it's something that allows us to continue to make changes. Because the voters could discontinue that revolving fund at any time if they think it's not being managed correctly. If they feel like the money's not supporting the operations of that fire department. I think making this move shows that we are using the fund exactly how. The previous board before us that made the decision to expand the fire department and proposed that revolving fund on the warrant articles. If we leave it the way that it was advertised it was gonna be used, and right now, we're not.
And I and I think we've given, um I know Chief Lambert's not here right now, but we've given him the opportunity to. Say to us, no, this wouldn't support. You know, this revolving fund wouldn't be able to support. Our equipment services. You know, if we use it more than we are currently. And hasn't done anything that's come up that says, oh no, you know, we've got this, you know, these big pieces of button coming up that are gonna lead it. To the point that we couldn't use it for regular equipment services.
Yeah, and we could mon, I'm not saying to do it. We could monitor it, so we know.
Mm-hmm.
He's working on his capital improvement plan right now, we know there's gonna be big expenditures, I know he's worried. About having to go out to a capital reserve account, that the voters may choose not to fund that. Um. This, by keeping the revolving fund, I agree, I understand why they set it up in the first place. If it's operating the way that they said it was gonna, this gives the board the ability to monitor. The balance that's in that fund, ensure that there's enough to support those future large purchases, which. Based on what he said last week, he was looking at maybe a million and a half in ten years for a new fire truck. I know they have air packs, they have other, but like I said, if we were looking at. Two, needing two million now over the next ten years, that's twenty thousand, we're at six fifty right now. And he's already taken out two, did the two hundred thousand come out already for the salaries that he had approved after we went default? Or is that happening as the salaries?
That happens, that's what he's taking here.
Okay. Yeah, so. To me, there's, the money's there.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a, if we do a full-time.
Well, increase the financial department budget.
Yeah, she has a qualified person there today to learn from. She has a true mentor in the office that is there overseeing her, helping her learn, helping her get stronger and better.
I know that that. Office, when there was a director and a junior person, she probably had left there, cause I was saying, um, I was in the role. We spoke daily, and I'm talking about. Two, we, we have five times a day, so there there's, you know, there's, you can't have those positions not interact. Can't have that person in that role, because in the position she's in right now. Not grow and learn, I I I learned in room that position every single day. Cause I have, you know, that's the type of work that happens in that office, you just can't. Not be separate and say, these are the only things you're paying, and you won't grow that. So I do think. And I think that there's, you know, having. The the full-time finance person. Well, the answer to some of the concerns that Chief Lambert is saying about being able to. Spend time doing the reports on 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 the finances of the revolving fund and other things, that position can help with those things.
Can I run through speak?
That's what it is now.
So I just watch it online, and I just wanna make sure I clarify what you're saying about the revolving fund, um. There is an excess in there, and to your point, you have to do some research. Here seventy five thousand dollars you were talking about, about being in a due to the capital reserve. Be bringing in years of my life, or that seventy five thousand dollars that you were saying can be, well, that's what we're paying the ambulance bill with every year, the seventy two thousand dollars right now. So there is excess in there, the only reason there's excess in there is because we had the separation from trying to. If we didn't have that, we might have a hundred thousand dollars. So the point of saying that we can use that to offset is if you take money out of that. When we plan for the future, it's almost like buying down the tax rate, right? So you take it out, and we have a bad year. We pay for it the next year. And then the second part of that is. When you look at that, when you see this sweep and I present the budget, you're gonna see that two hundred and eleven thousand dollars is out of the fund this year. So we're not not losing it, first off, we're not utilizing it incorrectly, we're using exactly as we're supposed to use. The reason why that money is, you know, I explained the other day, is you can take it out. To offset the fire department expenses, but next year. We have to now pay those expenses because revolving fund is too low to take money out of. Now you're gonna see this spike. So. I know everybody's fixated on that amount of that's in there. John will tell you we gained a little bit last year, but we've already spent. Close to two hundred thousand dollars in that this year. So the whole point of the fund and the way that it's designed is so that if we have that year. Let's say we buy a fire truck and that comes down to be, well, it's not like it's gonna rebound exponentially. Basically gonna rebound what we made. So when we look at what we spent this year versus what we take in, that's why I say, if you didn't have that reserve come in, we don't even have a hundred thousand dollars in there, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars maybe in there. And that would be to offset if we don't go to default, if we go to default this year, we're probably spending two hundred and seventy thousand dollars out of this year. So you can steal from it if you want, but it's.
And you don't think it's stealing from it, I'm talking about just having your expenses start coming from that account.
They do.
Which is, uh, some of them do. A lot of them are still coming from the general fund, if all of the fire department expenses started coming from that revolving fund from now until March. That would free up money in the general fund to support these other things, we talk about it being a rainy day and use of a default budget to protect the town.
No, it won't, you, if you take, and this is where. I I don't need the finance director to to run the budget down there, cause I watch on a regular basis. If you take all your operational costs from now until March that are there. You're gonna wipe out the whole funds. Cause if you take payroll alone, that's twenty two thousand dollars every two weeks. Huh, five, five pay periods, you're gonna be down to nothing. So. That's what I'm talking about, you need, and this is why I ask. For every budget, is that you guys truly understand how it operates? So when you're talking this stuff, when we're talking about taking money out of it, you see. That could go very, very, very quickly. The whole point, the the reason why that's there is to make sure the service runs, if you rob Peter to pay Paul. Eventually, you're not gonna be able to pay Paul back. And the taxpayers are gonna pay for it. Just alone, the payment for the ambulance and the car yet one is a hundred thousand dollars a year, we already paid those operational costs on it, on top of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year out of. So we always talk about that, and I know trying to put that out to the public, I understand it's a hard thing for me to do. But if we talk this way, they're gonna think that's how it operates, and that's not true. We run it as it should be run, we use that operate the fire department. Believe me when I say, there's almost two hundred thousand dollars pretty spent, we're not even done yet in the year, but.
But now it's just at six hundred and thirty or six twenty, so my point is. If you start putting your operating expenses out of that fund, it's not gonna deplete it between now and March.
It's gonna.
You'll, you'll still have a surplus, and that we wouldn't have to include salaries, we could put. All of your operating expenses excluded.
Yeah. Definitely. If you do the math on that, if, let's say you do that, and come March, so it's both. Let's say we space three, three hundred thousand out of that from now until March. Now, if we get hit next year, we're gonna need three hundred thousand out of it. If we take two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars from next year, where are we at?
Well, we're still earning money throughout that time period, it's definitely being added to.
That's. But that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, but we do have the future, you're not looking, you buy another truck for ten years, but if not, like we're looking at having to make this major purchase.
Yeah. Yeah.
Within the next year or two, the intention of this fund was to to protect services.
It is.
When times are tough.
It is.
Times are tough now.
So this.
We have to recuperate in the future.
But Catherine, if that, if I didn't take in two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars next year. If I spend two seventy, I'm already in the negative, right? So if I only project to take in two hundred and twenty five, but yes, next year's expenses are two seventy to take out of there, I'm going negative. And if that, I have a predictor that goes out, I have three years mapped out already, if we go default, we don't go default. But if you say that we're we're not making a million dollars a year. We're making between, the average is two twenty five is what I'm forecasting, if we make more, then we can use that to offset, absolutely. But to turn around and say we're gonna take a hundred and fifty thousand and we're just gonna spend all the expenses. You're gonna, we all do accounting, if you're paying what you make, you're gonna go negative. It looks like a surplus now, as we get to the next few years, and that's why I'm telling you, we're thinking right now, I'm thinking five years from now. And if we steal now, when the time comes to buy the next ambulance, because the ambulance lease is eight and a half years. We have to buy the next ambulance, or we have to buy the fire truck. If you take it out now, just for the sake of getting through March, you're setting that record for years.
So. Capital reserve accounts ask the voters to fund those with unassigned fund balance.
So you, we could.
Yes.
But the whole fund is set up specifically for running an ambulance and fire service.
Okay, but and I'm saying right now, times are hard, we don't have the money. The voters have lost services, we have an excess of money sitting here. That in the short term, right now, we could use that money, keep things going. When we go to the ballots to the voters in March, we could prepare capital reserve account articles so that they could choose to fund. And still maintain a balance in that revolving fund, that we have ample time, we have ten years. To make sure that we're building it up as we need to, right now, things are tight, right, this is the rainy day.
So right now, John, what do we ask them if I did for the rest of the year right now?
We're heading.
Expenditure wise. I I don't have that number, um, so if you look online, I was paying attention to it, and I, I just talked about this on Saturday. Most of the department's are under budget right now. I'm under budget by eleven percent, cause it's been being very crumble, and it's worked for us, so we're all under budget. So when you look at the bottom line budget, when we talk about we're strapped for money. We're doing well. We're under budget. So to to the to the point of saying that, oh my god, the end of the world's coming, it's not. And we're managing as a department head, you pay the three of us to run the 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 budget. We're doing pretty well, and I think that as we go along. As we steal from those funds, we're not setting the taxpayers up for the future, cause if we pay too much. We're actually gonna screw them over in the future, which has happened before in the past in this town, you were here for this, you guys were all here for this. When you buy down the factory, that's why we kind of get screwed this year. Is because we have to pay the taxes, we need to buy it down. So you're doing the same thing, if you take that money out of there. If you take substantial amounts of money out of there, you're doing the same thing, you're gonna set us up for failure in the future. That's why I'm so adamant about it, is because when you look at it, I mapped it out. Three years to the end of twenty twenty seven, so where we could be to make sure that we're not. Into fault for three years, if we go eight years, it doesn't look good for the long term, we're gonna keep going down and down and down. I understand the plight of wanting it to offset other things. But you're gonna set us up to fail.
I would like to see those analysis that you just stated that you'll do, but in order to really look at this.
Right.
And also take, you know, take a moment to look at where we are, the budget, and if we truly are. You know, under under budget, uh, you know, what's up, how's that look moving into the next year?
It's up.
Um, those are all things that should be considered as we look at possibly making this a full-time finance director.
So. I can tell you that as we go along, if we look at this year's funeral. If we go to fall next year, it's a hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars.
I appreciate that verbal information, that that's, these are the types of things that. I need to see. You know, especially with numbers and really be able to absorb that information. Uh, both visually and and with my map.
So right now, the department, the town budget is only seventy point six four percent spent, eighty three point three three percent. That's why I tell you, when we talk about this, so I think we're in a good spot. I think we've been all been financially responsible, if you only get us through this default budget. So that's why I say is, but when we start thinking about using those funds to do that. Don't set us up to fail for the future. And I and I apologize, in fact, I'm not gonna talk about it, and this is that constructive work I'm talking about, is hearing you talk about it, is that's why I'm not trying to explain that, is because.
Yeah.
I should be the professional in running it, because you guys, and you guys should expect me to, and I'm telling you that I'm running it efficiently. I'm trying to plan for the next five years so we don't defunct the ambulance service, cause it comes down to the end. And we have no money left, that happens, then you lay people off, you can't keep the service floating. And we have no ambulance to bring in directly, so it's a vicious snowball that just keeps going if we don't. So, and I said that for for all of us, is we're supposed to be paid to. Pay for you guys, so.
But John, will will you speak to uh Eric's analysis of, you know, the understanding on the budget and other reasons of the town, and what your viewpoint is?
He is correct, and you can see the current expense report if you want, they found it on there. See the detail.
And that is true, and I have been looking at that, but I don't have that, but your analysis report of the revolving fund, could you bring that to us the next meeting?
Okay, I can email it to you guys. I can say. The forecasting where we're gonna be in three years from now, I have some. Um, I do have to spend the time, or what I've been working on this week, is I predicted default by the end of the week for this year. But as we go along, as we print it next year, not knowing if we pass or not, I have a better number for that to know if it's gonna go up or down. As it stands right now, if we go to default, we're slowly going down, even with that sum that's in there, to the two hundred, four hundred thousand dollars. By twenty six, but that's if we don't take a big hit. And we have to pay ambulance and kayak monitors. Um, sometimes things like power stretchers, we put a C I P for a Lucas CPR device, which that's twenty five thousand dollars itself. I have one that, we got the older one from back down, and they separate, so. Those things and that C I P, and our plan to come out of that too, so we don't have to taxpayers for that and ask for an assigned balance. So.
Do you have any plans to establish capital reserve accounts for any of those things?
Well. No, because the thought for us in this fund, the way that it's designed, that most departments do. That fund is specifically for the money being in there and you spend out of it, so that way it doesn't hit the taxpayer, so we're not putting a burden on anybody. And we can keep the service afloat, not with integrated equipment. Sometimes what happens is the state says, like our nitro sock, sorry, four thousand dollars. So in a new protocol, you gotta buy it. We don't have a choice, so I had to spend four thousand dollars that I didn't buy before, that had to come out of the account, and the money that I had said we were gonna use to offset it. So, and one of those stretchers, and and this is just basic math of what they produce. If a stretcher goes bad, it's twenty thousand dollars for a place to stretch. Um, with a hydraulic, everything, it's it's not a cheap service, the cardiac monitor, luckily we bought them when we did, was fifty thousand dollars, it's now it's seventy six. So we got handled right under the the curve, more of the life fact would be more expensive, but. I'm just bought one at Convento's bus, and that's why I know when we talk about it. If we both, it's always cheaper, so that's what I've been doing, we're always, we just changed EMS vendors because boundary medical. Would negotiate price, so we moved to another one, the Ochusen supplier, right down on Berry Street, they gave us half price, but no Ochuson. So we're doing all those things to keep it afloat. As we go along and predict the future, I don't know if we're gonna go to default in the next seven years. That's why I say, they don't wanna put us in a bind long term by stealing out of it too much.
I don't look at it as stealing, but first of all, yeah, I I look at it as.
Well, it's a law, but you.
Our fiscal responsibility to make sure we are funding all of the departments adequately, and again. This is a rainy day, I understand what you're saying, but I disagree with your assessment, I think it is possible that we can still reset fund responsibly. And manage an adequate amount of savings in it without retaining too much money, so that we can make sure that the rest of our municipal government is funding that.
Right, and and just for, just payroll alone, you pull payroll alone out of that. That's almost fifty thousand dollars a month.
Mm-hmm.
With the two pay. So you're looking at in three months' time.
I was saying all the expenses not payable, I think I said that earlier, and I.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, we do right now.
Yes, not.
Right now, your EMS supplies is all taken out of there, and there's seven thousand expenses being, EMS supplies is taken out of there, ambulance payments being taken out of there. All of our ambulance billing services was being taken out of there, um, next year, that's the plan, next year has, I have eighteen thousand coming out of there. I have thirty thousand for medical billing coming out of there, the salaries has almost seventy thousand dollars taken out of it, so. I have that planned, so that's about two hundred and eleven thousand if I had to ask us to take that. If not. If not, add another fifty three thousand to it whenever that amount comes to, so there is close to three hundred thousand dollars if we go to default.
Well, I I agree with Tricia's assessment, wanting to see everything in writing, but I think it would behoove us to. Present some warning articles for capital reserve accounts and ask the voters if they would fund those out of unassigned fund balance, assuming once we clear our audit, we have enough money to do that. To be prepared, and then that does allow us to shift more operating costs on that revolving fund. Knowing that we are saving for that rainy day, knowing that we're prepared. For what comes in the future, but right now, I I believe we're in the thick of it, and I think we're just sitting on an excess of money that we could be spending more wisely.
Any warrant articles coming up for twenty twenty six that you might be thinking of coming out of unassigned fund balance? Probably wouldn't be possible this year, we're not due to have our audit for twenty twenty four begin much before January, so we won't have a solid number to use.
Well, I had spoken with you previously and you said thought the auditors would be.
I asked them that question, they will, they will not.
And I don't believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did ask that question.
That's true.
The question was, would they be able to give us a a uh. A conservative estimate of what we could use, Kathleen and I had talked about that, and the auditor came back and said he would not be able to do that. And so that takes that option off, I just want.
For this year, but it's still something we could pursue in the future, and we're not looking to fund this equipment for eight to ten years, hopefully.
This year. Absolutely. For twenty twenty seven.
That gives us time to prepare and fund ourselves ads that we will still allowing us to meet the needs of the municipality today without hurting the current operations of the fire department. That's that's my point. So.
So physician should be discussed further.
Sorry, I apologize.
Yes, I thought that I would want to have.
Okay.
Discussion at home, you mean.
Moving on. We also have, uh, you see healthcare information. Uh, the recommendation from Nico, our new insurance broker, is to stay with the same. Insurance package we offered this year, we're having newer enrollment, remember, we just enrolled um, September to December. We'll have a brand new enrollment starting in January. So we'll be on the yearly cycle again. But she needs to know if the board agrees to stick with the same insurance package. I indicated that the health insurance is pulling out three point four or five percent. Even with that increase over our current package, we're still gonna come in under forty thousand from the current budgeted amount for healthcare.
That's great, you know, and I just wanna point out. How fortunate this board is that we made that decision to do that, I don't know if you've been watching the headlines, but. Most other school districts municipalities are getting humbled right now, if we hadn't pulled out when they did, we would have really been, and I know. I'm covered over that insurance, I know that it means things for.
I know.
The employees, it it felt like a decrease in coverage, there were some parts of it that were. But had we not done this, we would be looking at layoffs, people would be getting fired, absolutely, so I think it's a really good thing that we did this, and I'm. So happy that it's only going up three percent, and I believe it was the dental, nothing else went up, that was just the health insurance.
Just the health, all the other insurances are remaining level fund.
Yeah, yeah, we dodged a huge one.
So so is the board in agreement to stick with the current insurance plan?
I am, absolutely.
Okay. The next you have your signature folder. And your form. You all received the copy of the contract for Nihart. Which is the G A S B seven five, it's part of the audit.
This is on the on my.
Right.
Oh, my, my, I had it.
Yes, yes, go ahead, Mark. And that is a a requirement of audits to go over any. Uh, and report our obligations, our financial obligations for post-employment benefits other than pensions. We did one last year for the twenty twenty three, this is the twenty twenty four.
We need a motion on that.
Yes, she might give me just one signature.
Yeah.
Email.
Um. Make a motion that the board allow the healthcare boards, um, releasing it with Nihart. Do our audit for the benefit. One second. And on favor, Kathleen, I'm sorry, I'm not. This is where it's gonna get tricky when you're trying to agree and sign and still keep the meeting going. It's challenging, it's a challenge to sign, so we won't forget it. You know, it seems like a good idea to wait till the end, but. But done that board who didn't sign something.
And while Tricia is signing that, I'll point your attention to the last, in addition, your folder, which I just received, it's out of the new. Um. So if you want to take a look at that, I just gave it back to uh, Jack Henley, the superintendent. Jack sent it to us, apparently they approved it a bit ago, who thought we had sent it to me. And uh, you've had.
Yeah, I think there's a key. Uh, we've been able to. Really best serve our taxpayers, to get us on the same page, and yeah.
So I'll take that as a unanimous, you're in favor of it?
Yeah.
You are.
Yeah, do theatrically.
Okay.
Yeah, for the public, so the public knows it, it's about a joint meeting, the school board meeting jointly with the select board, and I think in here they are supposing quarterly.
Mm-hmm.
Meetings, um.
Two members from the selectmen, two members from the school board, so you're under your form, you don't have to post it. Makes it easier to meet, I'm sure. And this is just to work on community-wide uh. Progress and partnership between the two boards.
Yep.
I think it's a good idea.
Nice.
And that's all I had for tonight, thank you.
Um. Even since I'm gonna be the least to it, I don't know why she feared this feeling. In that consent folder, was there a pending tenure for the new supervisor that she was.
No, they weren't lost.
I don't have, um. My name to protect it ever.
What?
We uh, in form of. Oh, if we ever get one back, we can provide it back.
I signed it, and so did she with Jack. That day, she only yet to register. And I called Diane about it, because remember I said, why are you the only one on?
Oh, yeah, you were talking about, yeah, that's the provision record of the form.
Right.
I mean, but so Jackie should have a.
Copy, because I gave it back to her.
That's where.
We have a new signature checklist that we need to.
Offer proof, so we got a reservation and they found somebody and.
Supervisor of the checklist information sheet, do you have that completed? No, their name, their contact information.
Appointment information.
The actual appointment paperwork so that they can be appointed. Okay.
You do you have that?
New person or the ones for something?
Yeah, for the new. You don't have one for the new person that they want to appoint?
I I we did the. Request for an appointment.
Okay.
Well, they you guys have to approve it.
Oh, request for.
Can you? Right, that's what we got, yeah, from that.
Could 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 we get that?
I can.
So what what this does is generate a process so that Diane can create an oath form. So if the board would like to. Um. Make make a a motion and a vote to appoint this person, given the information you have here.
Yeah.
Diane, that form, I can send it electronically to you all to sign this formality, but if you take the vote tonight, we can move this along. Okay, okay.
What would be the effective date, Karen?
The effective date would be today, now this is an appointment until the next scheduled vote in March. Then if that person who you're nominating or appointing tonight wishes to keep that position, they would have to run on the ballot. And they would only fulfill the remaining time of a person who stepped out, not a full term.
Okay. Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion that we appoint Geraldine Anne Verano, Verano. Uh, as supervisor of the checklist, effective today, with a uh, temporary term in. March.
Well, well, it would be, um. March, well, or whatever the voting, the next.
I'm gonna say it next, I like saying it.
Yes. And the name again, sorry, Geraldine.
Geraldine Anne Verano, V E S R O N E A U.
Awesome.
Uh, got a second from Laura, on favors?
Kathleen, Diane, Laura.
Trish.
Okay, we'll have that oath form created tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'll send it out to this. Group here to sign, and then it'll be.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So after that, she gets again.
Yes.
Yeah, it's from the.
Yeah.
I'll do it tomorrow.
Oh, no.
I'll send it back to me, stop.
Okay. Thank you. Good, good news. Uh, any other business?
I have one more thing I forgot. It'd be super quick, I promise.
Come on, chat.
I had, I had, I had, I was asked by a a resident on River Road, um, to. Put up a sign saying no jake breaks. Uh, a jake break on a truck is when they. Yeah, and they make all that noise, um. It is, they, because some of the trucks use it, I mean, use it near. The Dodge road in the school, um, it it's quite loud, so. If it's okay with you guys, I'd like that. Signs are, signs are, I mean, if you.
It would be an A I R sign, yeah.
We'll, we'll try to do the thirty dollar one, um, but I just wanna make sure that you, nobody has any objections.
Steps limited to just those. Brakes, is it, either other brakes that ain't too much on?
No, no, those are, they're engine brakes, so what they do. Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I've never seen it labeled that way on a sign.
Uh, engine brake.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so what I'll try to, yes.
Plus, I got. They look, they look, you know, we do.
Yeah.
The sign don't say that, it's say no.
They're pretty.
And I sense that it's.
So, everybody's good with it?
She not say.
Oh.
About it, something. About signing? Yeah. Uh, we put during the public comments, maybe at our next meeting, or the, the tab about signing, you could just chat about it directly.
Tell me, please, something.
Okay.
Not yet, wait till on the side.
So we have some correspondence, we did talk about. The letter of resignation from Bill with Surt. We have, uh, three letters of recognition from the library. Betsy Ramlett is sending her letter of resignation, her last day of work will be November twenty seventh. Joy Ramlett was resigning as well, she doesn't state the date, effective immediately October twenty sixth. And then Wendy is also resigning and her active work will be November twenty eighth. Okay. And that's essentially our entire.
I see, uh, it sounds like a really lighted, beautiful, I mean.
Wow.
So is that another job, Paul things and?
You believe the trustees is picture.
That's. My boss, yeah, yeah, but they are. On the town payable and stuff, so yes, and their resignations, only the two of them get one to each other. Only two, and they have part-time with low benefits, so it's very limited hours, yeah.
And that's no one doing their job now?
No, somebody still is providing help, yeah, the trustees are working on it, they're they're meeting and dealing with the issue.
Speaking, I must add this to the panel. Um, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Nevertheless.
It's John, and I think you were where Joseph Wood, um, did give his resignation. Probably last Saturday, Sunday, so he's no longer with us, so not sure who's taking over the realm for the union stuff, but uh. He resigned.
Okay.
I know, we remember, but he was a person on the fire department that was instrumental in bringing in the union, so.
Yeah.
We may not, we aren't really thinking any of that.
I'm not sure, it's not like a.
She knew somebody else stepping into that.
No, I don't, that's one of those taboos, that's something I don't really.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I have heard that of that since. Joe Wood decided to resign. I think they're gonna need to bring in someone to be the point of contact. I'll keep you posted.
Okay.
Um, we also have in here a letter from, um, Adam Rogers at at Atar, um, regarding the twenty.
It's not resigning too soon. That's it.
That's it.
Resignations, that's it pretending, right?
Yes, yeah.
All right, uh, this is regarding the twenty twenty five preliminary B R A, the segment of sales ratios, dining results. Um, the segment, something we're calling the district relation, so it's work. Um, anyway, so the question is that the salary on your house indicates a median ratio of seventy seven point nine percent. Uh. They pray for ladies to drive a show because.
Our next, our next revale, no, I just thought.
Okay, I was gonna look at that.
Could you, she could send me a.
Yeah. Our next revale, he's saying that it's interested is twenty twenty seven, so we have another year or so. Operating that range. Uh, surrounding towns, Deerfield and Pembroke just went through it. You'll see substantially lower tax rate for a thousand, but their property values.
Values, yeah.
It it is relationship, but I will send it to you, Kathleen.
Okay, thank you so much.
We just got.
Yes, I think that was awful.
Fine, um, that's it for our correspondence. Uh, in the signature folder, we have, uh, we. One of the. Folks that we had a deed, had deeded their property, has paid everything that they need, and so now we would be deeding the property back.
Yeah.
Right, and that's for, um, so make a motion that the board is. Uh, accept this deed, um. Would. Here, Travis Santos for Matt Forman, lot thirty three, sub lot twenty six. Um, as a result of their cleaning up.
One second.
On favor?
Kathleen.
Diane, Laura.
Trish, I'm. Next item is the October twentieth meeting. Next item is the October twentieth meeting minutes, the select board, um, John did pick up on, uh, one error that under the preschool twenty twenty-six rent, we saw twenty-nine hundred and twenty-five hundred is indicated on there. Did anybody else have any, um, certain statements like that?
No.
Make a motion that we accept the October twentieth meeting minutes with the adjustment of the preschool rent information.
All second.
On favor?
Kathleen, I.
Diane, I.
Laura.
Trish. Make a motion that we ratify the consent calendar for November third, twenty twenty-five. On second, on favor?
Kathleen, I.
Diane, I.
Laura, I.
Trish, I. Make a motion that we accept the check manifest, numbers one seventy-three and one seventy-five.
Okay.
On favor?
Kathleen, I.
Diane, I.
Laura.
Good luck. Make a motion that we accept the town cable manifest about October thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
On favor?
Kathleen, I.
Diane.
First time, oh, and are you in favor, Laura?
Yes, uh, Laura, I.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry. And then you can go make a motion to close the meetings.
I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting. Sorry.
On favor?
Kathleen, I.
Diane, I.
Laura.
Well, uh, and.
And seven twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Boy, you come so fast.
I'm a she, but. It's nice, but well, maybe every other week.
I reset a little longer, my focus.
And has real.